Welcome everyone to the Los Alomitos Unified School District Board of Education Board Meeting. I am now going to declare that we are in open session. The first thing that I would like to say is that due to the fact that one of our board members, Mrs. Diana Hill, is with us virtually, we will be taking all of our votes this morning, this evening, on roll call votes. So it will be a little bit longer with all of our names and ayes and nays or whatever, but I wanted everybody to know we are doing this in an abundance of information so that people know exactly who voted how on each item. Also, I would like to have Mrs. Diana Hill because she chose to stay home under an abundance of caution just in case, because she may have perhaps, doesn't know, but she thinks she's better sheltering in place this evening. And I, as a person who would be sitting fairly close to her, appreciate her doing her civic duty, I would like her to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
All stands please. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Diana. I do miss not hearing the children's voices when we do our Pledge of Allegiance. We did start our meeting originally at four o'clock in the afternoon when we had a workshop on solar energy. And in order to do an executive summary, I'm asking Dr. Pulver to speak to it, please.
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the Board. We have been looking at potential options for solar projects at our nine school sites and here at the district office. At one point, early on when we were doing town hall meetings before Measure G, solar was an option that some of the community members were really interested in having us explore due to the green option. I think a lot of people within this community care about the environment. Unfortunately, we won't be able to have the capital in order to do so. So we've been exploring another option called a power purchase agreement that would really, should we move forward with going with solar, allow us to lease and really purchase the solar energy that is generated through three rays through the solar company. And in doing so, we would have to have no capital cost to implement them, to construct them, to maintain them for the life of their program. They are guaranteed to have a minimum production value. And in this process, we believe that we could, over the life of the 30-year contract, should we enter into that agreement, save the district between anywhere from $10 to $15 million, particularly as we capitalize on the investment that we've already made with our battery storage. So earlier during the board workshop, the board looked at the various options for consideration. They did give us direction to continue to move forward in entertaining this process. The board asked if they could take a look at what are some preliminary opportunities to see where the solar objects or towers, not really towers, they're structures, they could look like a shade structure, that's the other really positive benefit, a raise, you're right, where they could be located at each school site. And then as we adopt this, and if we do move forward, we would certainly want to engage the community. We worked with PFNG, which is one of the companies that we are exploring to enter into should we do this. And they would help us really have a community stakeholder opportunities to get their input of where the locations are the least obtrusive, but at the same time, providing an environmental effect, providing some shade structure for our students and as well as being able to provide a savings to our district. So we would like to capitalize on the savings before the next year because the federal tax credits are higher this year than they will be next year. So we'll be continuing exploring that over the next few months.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Dr. Pulver.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is an action item, and it's a resolution. And I would like Marla Davidson to read it, please.
This is very exciting. Resolution 2019-2020 by the Los Alomitos Unified School District honoring Blake Ravello. Whereas Blake has served as a Los Alomitos student representative to the school board for the 2019-2020 school year and is a valued member of the Los Alomitos High School Associated Student Body. Whereas Blake has been attending Los Alomitos schools since kindergarten and continued through 12th grade, first at Los Alomitos Elementary, then at McCullough Middle School, and finally, Los Alomitos High School. Blake is an outstanding student, which is evident when you speak with his teachers, past and present. Whereas Blake has been involved in multiple school activities, including his role in student government as student representative to the Board of Education. He is a four-year student leadership veteran, organizing and hosting multiple school events, advocating for the inclusion of all students to experience the spirit of being a Los Al loco. Whereas Blake has also been involved with many activities outside of school, here in community service hours volunteering with his church, in our Los Alomitos schools classrooms, supporting student instruction and mentoring middle school leadership groups. Whereas Blake has received leadership recognition for his four-year participation in the Los Alomitos Associated Student Body, Blake will be attending California State University Long Beach in the fall, majoring in mathematics, with the intention to enter the teaching profession, become an ASB director, and to one day lead a district as the superintendent. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education that Blake Ravello be recognized and publicly commended for his outstanding representation and service to the Los Alomitos Unified School District.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second Blake.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Boyer.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Cattulli.
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson.
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill via Zoom.
Aye.
Okay, this is just an action item that we have to, want to take care of business so we can go to pleasure, I guess. And our next item, as much as we hate saying goodbye to Blake, it does give us an opportunity to say hello to a new friend. And so this is the approval of the appointment of our student rep for next year, Nico Villanueva, to the Board of Education for 2020-21. And I believe, Dr. Pulver, you are going to speak to this.
Actually, Mrs. Reed has just joined on. And so Mrs. Reed will give a brief introduction, but we had the great pleasure, Mrs. Cattulli, Mrs. Reed and myself, of interviewing Nico. He goes by Nico, it's a Nicholas, who will be our student board rep next year. Nico, we can see you via Zoom on our screens, but I know, I don't believe that the video is showing the board, so the board can't see, or Diana and Andrea can't see us, but we certainly can see you and Diana. So welcome, Nico and Mrs. Reed. I'm going to turn it over to you just to give a little bit more information about Nico to the board.
Thank you so much, Dr. Pulver. Well, we are thrilled to welcome Nico Villanueva to the board next school year. Nico was described by Mrs. Siaka, the ASB director, as hardworking and being a really widely connected student at the high school. He's a three-year member of our ASB program, serving as freshman co-president, sophomore co-president, and this school year as the Assembly Commissioner. And additionally, he's heavily involved in campus clubs like Growing Up STEM, as well as being a member of the Los Alomitos Aquatics Program. Outside of school, Nico spends time volunteering for the community, participating in food provision programs with two community churches, and he's also a member of the National League for Young Men, empowering young men to be role models and leaders for the betterment of our greater community. So welcome, Nico Villanueva.
Okay, I need a motion for this approval.
I move approval.
Second. Okay, and roll call? Poor Tina.
Mrs. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Cattulli.
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson.
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill.
Aye.
Okay, we now have the business part of our action items taken care of, and we'll now go into our presentations. And one of the benefit of being the president is I get to go first, so I don't get compared to outstanding student board representatives who eclipse anything I have to say. So, yeah. Okay, Tina. Okay, this particular, what I wanted to talk about is how at this time of year, we're usually going to many, many celebrations. We're going to baccalaureates, we're going to awards night for our middle school and our high school students, and we're just celebrating all the wonderful things that students have been doing for as many years they've been with Los Al. But now, unfortunately, because our students aren't in school, we aren't able to have all these wonderful celebrations. That does not mean that we do not know how to celebrate, that does not mean we're not going to recognize people. So I have chosen two videos and one still picture to show how we, as a district, have been trying to celebrate all of our students. It's not doing it.
Tina, can you just go to the next slide?
No, it finally caught up, okay. all four years of their attendance at Los Al High School. They get to have a special stole that hopefully they will wear at graduation in public, in front of everybody. But our counseling team really thought, you put that much effort into your job as a student for four years, how can it not be publicly recognized? So what's better than a car caravan and honking horns? Anyway, so I'm very happy to see that. But as much as we love our valedictorians, we happen to love many, many other people. We love people who are going from, who are graduating from high school, who are part of the Los Al Griffins, that's the sign down on the very bottom. Those are all of our seniors who've completed four rigorous years and are going on with their future. We have our two middle schools, where we have the kids who are promoting from eighth grade, they are turning into a Griffin. When you get an eagle and a lion together, you guys become a Griffin, they're getting ready to do that. And we also have from our elementary schools where it says, you know, bye-bye whatever school elementary they're in, to hello, middle school. So all of our students from all of our different levels are missing traditional promotion and celebrations, but we have found, as a community, different ways to celebrate. May is also, not only trying to celebrate our students, it is also, May has the Day of the Teacher, Teacher Appreciation Week, Classified Staff Appreciation, and Administration Appreciation. May is our appreciation month, and we have made a video to let our staff know how much we care about it. Some have degrees and credentials.
Some have whistles or toolboxes.
Some have mowers or band-aids.
Some drive buses and delivery vans.
Some have aprons or paintbrushes.
Some use computers and some use calculators.
Some use April and some use Zoom.
You are our superheroes. Happy Staff Appreciation Week.
In summary, I just would like to say that this is, every time I hear we're in unprecedented times, this is challenging, it's like, yada, yada, yada. We are, we are creating, we are actually building the airplane that's in the air, and we have done an incredible job with it. And it is because we have all hands in the middle, it is because kids come first, it is because of, because one of the signs says, we're not a Los Al staff, we're a Los Al family. And as our tagline that I am sure you did not think was going to be so relevant, we are so much better together. So I just wanted to share with the community that looks like May is like, let's appreciate every one month, and for a very good reason. And with that, I will turn it over to our fabulous last presentation for him to give. Blake, take it away. Well, we don't know where I have been.
Good afternoon, President Cattulli, esteemed board members, Dr. Pulver, Executive Cabinet, and community members live on YouTube. My name is Blake Ravello, and here is my final board report of the 2019-2020 school year.
We need to get it up on the computer.
Oh, yeah. Can they see me? I can do like a little dance while we're waiting.
Hi, Blake.
Hello, how are you, Mrs. Hill?
I'm good.
Yeah, ready? Oh, okay, awesome, okay. Okay. While we may not be physically on the field, our celebrations are spreading like wildfire across our social media pages. We are celebrating all of our spring sports, ranging from girls across to our baseball players, on our newly developed LAHS activity Athletics Instagram. We are also celebrating our signings with special profile pictures and story posts. As you can see here, my dear friend Molly Monson will be attending Gonzaga University, oh, right here, sorry about that. My dear friend Molly Monson will be attending Gonzaga University in the fall, and she will be rowing. She is an amazing person, and I'm so excited for her, so it was an honor to congratulate her on our LAHS Athletics Instagram. It is our goal to continue out these senior nights and signing days until the end of this month, and furthermore. Moving on to our arts at Los Al, we are continuing our non-stop work with our AP Art 3D students taking the wheels home from their ceramics classes to work on their final AP projects. Also, the 2020 Cappys nominations have been officially announced, celebrating the stellar work of all of our drama students. For also, for those that are interested in being on any of these arts next year, whether they range from drama to dance to choir, all of these auditions are happening this month. Mrs. D'Angelo's son just auditioned for choir, shout out to him, sure he did an amazing job, and they are looking forward to getting as many students as possible. So please, please, please look at the Los Al website, and please sign up for it. Moving on to our academic, social distance learning still continues on in the academic field, where we have to thank very special groups of people. To start off, our teachers and our tech team have been working around the clock. Our teachers have worked harder than ever, I'm telling you, harder than ever, to make sure that we are continuing our enrichment activities at home. Also, our tech team, we have the, I mean, you all know, and everybody knows at home, we have the best tech team on the planet, I'm sure, I bet you. We are in the top 10 of fastest people that got the stay-at-home learning on, I'm telling you, it caught up so quickly, and shout out to Dr. Pulver, and all of the board members, and all of the administration, all of the cafeteria workers, everyone who had a part in doing this, because as Dr. Pulver said, we are truly better together, and the only way that we would have been able to get through this is with everyone, all hands in. Moving on to our activities at Los Al, distance learning cannot stop us, as we have over six new shows happening on our Los Al Staycation YouTube channel, as well as our activities Instagram. These shows range from a meditation show with Zen expert Raul, to working out with the fittest of them all, Mr. Fenton. We also have a makeup show debuting every Monday, a calm calligraphy show debuting every Tuesday, and a cooking show every Wednesday of the week. And might I just say that every single one of the logos that you see up on these screens are designed by future student rep Nico Villanueva. He is a master at designing logos, if you ever need him next year, he is fantastic. I also have the honor of hosting a YouTube channel called The FaceTime Show, which debuts every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday of the week. We have around three to four guests a day with specific themed episodes, such as a Disney edition, birthday edition, and might I say, my personal favorite, the Bachelor in Paradise edition, is definitely a fun one. This is just a fun way to keep us all connected and better together. Also, on The FaceTime Show, we have had a great time getting to surprise our valedictorians, leadership award recipients, and even our senior medallion recipients. This would not have been possible without the fantastic help of our college and career team, counseling team, the fantastic administration at Los Al, and my ASB advisors, Mr. Fenton and Mrs. Siaka. Our ASBs also have the honor of running daily spirit weeks. We are currently in our eighth week of our Los Al Staycation Spirit Series. It is a great time, let me tell you, I don't know if any of you have an Instagram, but as you can see up there, we've been running them since day one, since we have had the opportunity to get out, and you can see they range from Taco Tuesday on Cinco de Mayo, where you post some of your favorite taco creations, all the way to today, which is Title Tuesday, where you post your favorite piece of literature, or just one that you're reading right now. All right. Next up, we also had a fantastic senior drive-by, which included Mrs. Russell, thank you so much for coming by, we really appreciated it, and also over 30 staff members and teachers. They celebrated all of us seniors with signs, confetti, and some crazy Griffin costumes. We also had a football clock countdown in honor of our 739 seniors. This allowed all of those who wished to come and pay their respects to the class of 2020 to do so. And our selfie of the week comes from other than my house, surprise, surprise, I have not been leaving, yes, I've been taking the social distancing seriously. We added onto the family two new bunnies, Foo Foo and Hopscotch, this is Foo Foo up here. And they did decide yesterday to take a little vacation and roam out into our backyard without us knowing, but don't worry, we were able to catch them. It took 15 minutes and a couple of dirt on our legs, but we were able to catch them, so they're back in their home now. All right. Okay, I'm going to try not to get emotional on this, but it's going to be bad, so here come the waterworks, okay. First off, I would like to take the time to thank a couple people I would not be here without. But first off, I would like to congratulate Nico Villanueva on this amazing honor. I could not think of a better person to take on this role, and I can guarantee you that he will not disappoint you guys, and he will always have you in your seat laughing. And that's what we need in this world right now, we need people to make us laugh, and that is exactly what Nico does. From trying to go and catch some grunion running fish with you, sorry, I'm getting blurry in my eyes, to streaming Stranger Things Season 3, all the way till 3 o'clock in the morning with Keshy and Sinead, we've made some pretty great memories. I'm so, oh, thank you. I'm so proud of you, bud, and continue to do some amazing things next year. Mr. and Mrs. Villanueva, you've raised a great kid and be proud of him. Ooh, gosh.
Yeah.
But first off, moving on to the thanks yous, I would like to thank my sisters for finding a way to deal with me at home always. Madison, Tess, and Sadie are going to do some great things in the future, and they all want to become teachers back in this district, so keep an eye out for them, please. Next off, I would like to thank the amazing teachers. I'm not only out in high school, but also at my middle school and elementary school. You are the reason our district is the way that it is, and I would not be here without each and every single one of you. I would also like to thank my friends. My friends pushed me to my limits, and it has been really tough not seeing them these past few months, but luckily through FaceTime, we are all getting through this together. I remember talking to a great friend of mine, Sophia Bean, and we all, and we all said the only way that we were going to get through this is if we were all one family, and that is exactly what we have been doing. I would also like to take the time, sorry, it's long, I would also like to take the time to thank the four years of ASB families that I have had. To those who are watching live right now and to those who are not, I am thankful for you, and I will cherish every single memory that we've all had for a lifetime. You all inspire me to be a better leader every day, and there is not a day that has gone by that I have not thanked God for each and every single one of you. Leading this school is not an easy feat, but we always find a way to push through and make the school a better place. I would also like to take the time to thank the coaches that I have had over the past four years of my life. Kat Davidson, Lauren Jewett, Casey Ainsley, and Kaliere Gathright, for a couple moments there, Courtney Lazar and Kira Azren. It has been such an honor having the chance to become closer with you guys, and having the chance to play in some amazing events with you guys. You always find a way to keep me calm, even though I'm such a hectic person, and find a way to bring all my crazy ideas into one thought. I love you all. To all the board members and every single one of you superintendents, you are the main reasons I am here. It has been an honor getting the chance to sit up here with each and every one of you, and I could go on and on, but we would really be here all night. Please know how blessed I feel to get, getting the chance to know all of you and all of your stories. And my goal is to hopefully be sitting back up there on that seat in this room with hopefully some of you in the future. Also, to the amazing administration at Los Al, Mr. Vlasic, Mrs. Sporatos, Dr. Lepore, Mr. Farber, Mr. Bowen, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Mullenclamp, thank you for making our campus the place that it is. To the best ASB advisors I could ever ask for, Mrs. Siaka and Mr. Fenton, a lot has happened these past three years, and you were the ones who led our team past these mistakes. These two do not get nearly enough credit for what they have accomplished over the past years, and I hope in the future, every single one of you board members and superintendents will take the time to go look at their skills lab classrooms, or even in just the ASB room, because what you will see is absolute magic. Teaching at the, they teach at the highest degree, and that is what Los Al is all about. You both pushed me to be a better servant leader, and I will remember your lessons for a lifetime. And finally, for the best parents I could ever ask for who are watching live at home right now, hi, Mom. My mom, Carrie Ravello, and my dad, Oscar Ravello, have shaped me into the person I am today, and that is a debt that I will not be able to repay. My mom came to every single one of these board meetings, Missy, Waterpulu Games, and many other special and important events to be here, and I'm so thankful for it. But most importantly, thank you to Los Al, the place that has prepared me for life, and the place I hope to live out the rest of my life as soon as I get my teaching credentials. We will always be better together, once a Griffin, always a Griffin. Peace out, Los Al. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Blake, and we will actually have a recognition for you and for Nico later in a few minutes. And all I can say is that I am so glad I don't have to follow that, but unfortunately, Dr. Pulver does. Ready for your superintendent's report now?
Blake, it was weird not seeing your mom here tonight either, so, Mrs. Ravello, we love you, and I know you're watching from home as well. At least you won't have to film this meeting because it's on YouTube. So Blake, you've just been an exceptional board member, we're going to talk about you in a little bit, but just thank you for always bringing the life and the energy and the joy and the passion each and every single day. It's certainly uplifting and inspiring for all of us, so thank you for that. So thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board. I do ask that you indulge me a little bit tonight. My report will be a little bit longer than normal, because normally, this would be the day, I'll get a little emotional as well, that we would recognize our retirees, and we would have started off the day, ooh, why am I getting emotional? We would have started off the day we're honoring them before the board workshop, and under the situation, we just haven't been able to. So with the great help of HR, Dr. Fraser and Ms. Penny Noel, the last half, we're just going to give a little tribute, just a picture of all of our retirees and how long that they've served, I'd like to give them a little bit of that credit, so, and recognition, because we really believe that we are better together, we believe that the hallmark of this district really are the people, and a significant portion of that are our amazing employees. And so before, just want to share a bit of the end-of-the-year functions that we have. We've shared a lot already at our last board meeting, Ms. Cattulli shared some of the potential dates for end of the year, alternative dates for graduation, et cetera, but there's still, if you would, a business or a system of sorts to have to kind of close one school year out before we can even really begin planning and starting for the next school year. And so each of the school's principals are communicating out to their families, but I thought I would just share that end-of-the-year checkout of lockers, and returning textbooks, and digital Chromebooks, et cetera, we're going to do in a systematic way to make sure that we can we're going to do in a systematic way to make sure that we can provide social distancing in the process. Boy, it's... The computer might be a little possessed. But in essence, handing out yearbooks, much like we would do our grab-and-go meals, cap-and-gown distribution for our seniors, and returning different materials. So do pay attention to the principals' emails from each site. I've given some of the dates at the elementary schools. We'll be doing it separately, so they'll be following up. But we're showing the middle and the high school dates there as well. Do have an update as through much discussions with the board, even through various ongoing conversations with our employees. I think everybody is bracing themselves for an impact to the state economy, which obviously, state education is funded by the state economy. And given the current economic situation, what we keep hearing is to plan for a potential impact of up to 10% to 20% reduction or more. So due to that situation, we have decided we were looking forward and spent much of this year really brainstorming and getting ready to implement a new elementary instrumental program that would complement our general music program as well. But at this time, we have decided that we are going to pause the implementation of our K-5 elementary instrumental music program for the next school year. And we will continue to partner with the U Center. They have been a great partner for us prior, and so we'll just continue that partnership, that they will provide elementary instrumental music opportunities after school like we have in the past. And under the social distance guidelines and the stay-at-home orders that continue to remain in effect, the opportunities of summer school have vastly changed and are limited. We are not offering a summer school program for our K through 8th grade students. We are offering an intervention support, credit recovery for our high school students who failed first semester so that they can continue to stay on, our Griffins can be on track to graduate in the out years. But we are so fortunate to be able to partner with LEAF. LEAF is really the ed foundation that continues to support myriad of ways in which that we cannot. And every year, they offer a summer enrichment program. And you know, like the sign of the times, they are hedging forward, and they are doing so via Virtual Summer Institute. It will be a two-week window. They have two sessions. Session one is June 8th through the 19th, and session two is June 22nd to July 2nd. They are offering 75-minute online classes, and they cover a wide variety of academic areas and subjects. The flyer that you see on the right is just their session one for elementary. If you go to the link, you'll be able to see the middle school and high school courses and then the session two offerings. But I just thought it would give you a nice array of some of the different programs that they are offering, still available virtually through the community. And then I think everyone's, what is on everyone's mind is, what about next year? What is going to happen with school for the 2020-21 school year? I wish I could sit here and tell you that we had all the answers that we... But actually, I think at this time, we have more questions than answers. We, even with that being said, we're not burying our head in the sand. But we do know that schools and the guidelines continue that our schools are still closed. There's no guidance yet as when they will open up. Our district offices and our school-side offices are still closed to the public. You see even this board meeting is closed to the public, but we've made access through YouTube. We have a very limited virtual summer program really for the high school for students who failed first semester to allow them to remediate. And then extended school year for some of our students who are qualified under an IEP. So the big question, when will offices open back up? Even just to enroll students, et cetera, we don't know. So I imagine it'll continue to be at some point, some phase, when the governor looks at other businesses, et cetera. And that would just be our offices. We have had created opportunities for the public to enroll their children into our schools for next school year if they've never enrolled. A lot of that can be done digitally, online. We made some provisions there through areas online. In terms of what will next school year look like, I think that's what every superintendent, teacher, classified employee, board member, parent, student wishes they had the answer now. But I think one thing we've learned by living in this time is we just have to kind of accept the unexpected, the ambiguity, and we'll continue to move forward. So currently, the State Superintendent of Instruction, Tony Thurman, has initiated a statewide task force with some of the best minds in various facets. And I think that they will really be giving some guidance to public school systems of what that will look like. They continue to tackle, how can schools safely reopen? And what steps to take to protect both the health and safety of students, families, and staff? Certainly, we are not immune. We've heard a lot of different ideas that people are floating out there. And so ourselves, I think we have, we are exploring contingency Plan A, contingency Plan B, C, D, and any permutation of those as well. So, you know, we're starting to hear that there are conversations about, will schools be able to be physical in person again in the fall or not? Would we have to continue distance learning? And I think our distance learning would look different if we did do that than it was this past year because this past year was called emergency distance learning. We had no time to really prep and plan and provide a robust system. And even the system that we have, I think we have done a great job with the limited time that we've had. Will it be virtual or will it be some hybrid? Some people have, you've probably heard across the state, they're talking about perhaps you have to limit the number of students. Maybe some kids come on Monday, some kids come on Tuesday, a 20% model. Maybe it's a 50% model, people come every other day. All of those are speculative at this point. And if anybody has an answer, I think they really are just trying to create their own answers to try to create some sense of normalcy moving forward. Right now, our current start date is August 5th, 2020, or July 29th for Weaver. We think that's a little early, given the unknowns at this time. And so one option, one of the contingency options that we are considering is to push back our start date. We are working with our employees' associations. We are exploring that option, which a possible start date could push that back to August 31st. We'd still have 180 school days, but we are just trying to find any option. If there is an option that we could get students to be able to come physically back and have their education face-to-face with their student and the teacher, we want to provide any opportunity for that. Even if we pushed it back to August 31st, we still could have those same hybrid models that you're hearing. But at least more time gives us the option for the stay-at-home and the social distance guidelines to be revised and perhaps open up in some capacity. Obviously, there'll be some level of testing that people are talking about, whether we'll have to, you know, daily, weekly, check temperatures of students, of staff, et cetera. And then there are some districts, particularly out in LA, that are considering kind of having both a virtual program for maybe 20% of the population and an in-person program if the guidelines permit. So I do wish that I could share what our plans are for next year. We don't have them yet. We'll continue to take the guidance from the task force that the State Superintendent is moving forward with. But we do believe that if we can reach agreements with our associations, that a possible later start date will at least buy us more time. Many of us just cannot imagine starting the school year off. Think of a four-year-old, a five-year-old TK or kindergarten starting the first day of school on a computer screen with their teacher, let alone middle school or high school. A freshman starting, meeting six different teachers at the same time, et cetera. And it's challenging for our staff. Our staff also, that's going to be the unknown as well. How will they balance the needs that they have for their own personal lives if their own kids are home because it's a virtual platform? And also their professional obligations to the community and to our students. And so that's a tall task, but I think that we will up for the challenge. I think one thing we know, we can endure much more than we give ourselves credit, us as a human race, but certainly, I think here in LoSal as well. So I wish that I had, like I shared when I started, more answers than questions. But I know the community's been asking this, and I'm sure many of you have been starting to hear this from the community. So I wanted to at least share some of the thoughts and get those out there, particularly if we change our start date, we would want to get that out so that families can make a decision in that model. So in that model, if we do have it August 31st, we'd have the first week where we'd have our, we'd offer some professional development days and our planning days on the front end so that we don't lengthen the school year too far into June because the following year, we'd go right back to our regular start. And so I would think you may be tired of hearing this, but from our last board meeting, we, the day after our last board meeting, we had the Orange County Committee on Redistricting, where that was the final step of approving the trustee area map. So I'm pleased to share with the community, if they've not already heard, that our trustee area map has been approved by all parties. In fact, tonight's board meeting, the board will be approving what the election, for the November election and what the ballot of a 200-word, I believe, will be. So Green 4 is our map, and the sequencing of the elections are areas 2, 4, and 5 this November 2020, and then areas 1 and 3 in 2022. So it'll take two election cycles to fully transition to this trustee area plan. And this is the part where I just wanted to really give a shout out to our employees who are retiring. We really do think that we are a family here. And I know that every single one of these employees, while we say that we know that people need to collect a paycheck, that this is much more than a paycheck for any of them. This really has been a higher calling to really do great work on behalf of students and staff. And the level of support that they provide their own colleagues is just second to none. And so I'd like to talk about just at least mention each of our employees who are retiring this school year. So our first retiree is Alex Hernandez. He's been with us for five years in the Transportation Department as a bus driver, and we are going to miss Alex, but look at the joy on that picture there. And then in our Child Development Center, sometimes we call it as the CDC, Debbie Howe has been an instructional assistant for preschool, and she's been with us for nine years, and she's retiring at this time. Lori Funk has just been a spectacular instructional assistant in special education. She's worked a lot of her time here with our students in adult transition, and she is just always such a bundle of joy and always sees a smile on her face. And I know the kids are going to miss her, and many of the families who work, she has worked with those children are also going to miss her. So Rick Sorenson, he was a teacher for us for 16 years. Spent those years all at Oak Middle School as an education specialist, working with some of our students with various challenges and celebrations as well. And we're going to miss Rick. Rick actually had to, for family reasons, he retired in the, right after the New Year, around February or March. So Rick, we hope you're doing well. He moved out of the area. And then we have Teri Gentiliamo. She's been working for us for 18 years in a few different capacities. And that's what I love about many of our employees, particularly in the classified service, is they've been able to get promoted and move into different roles along their career here. And so Teri's been with us. In her last position, she was a campus supervisor at Los Alamos High School. Every single time that I would go onto campus, she was just always warm and welcoming and really just embracing all of us. So Teri, we're going to miss you. And Kathy Vanderlinden, 20 years. We were fortunate to give her her 20-year pin. We give longevity pins to our employees in five-year increments. And we only made it to a couple of schools before we were closed, but Oak was one of the school sites. And so it pleases me, Kathy Vanderlinden has worked with us. She's taught both math and art at Oak Middle School. She actually was going to retire mid-year because she had to move out of the area and then asked to return from her retirement because once we found out we were closing schools, that she could provide the distance learning to students from where she moved to, which was out of state, I think it's Kansas, but I could be wrong. And she was so committed, she had even pledged that if we were going to open school back up, she would fly back out here and finish the remainder of the year in person with our students. That didn't happen, but she was so willing to be able to do that. And just her dedication is just one to be commended. Pam Burgess works in our Child Development Center as well. She's worked for 21 years as a preschool lead. She started off her career here in LoSal in preschool as an IA and then elevated herself as a preschool lead. And she's there, right there in the center around some of our most precious preschool kids, where they're giving her some flowers and the balloons. So Pam, we are definitely going to miss seeing you as well. You notice I'm going in increments of years, so it keeps going higher and higher. Wait for it, we get to 40 years a little bit later. And so we have our clerical assistant and our attendance clerk, Janet Harris. She did retire in December, but again, just an amazing employee. She's worked at Los Alamos High School for 23 years and just is already missed at Los Alamos High. Dave Beck, 24 years as a science teacher at Oak Middle School. He is just an excellent teacher who has really helped along with the STEAM and the STEM Fair. And I don't know a student who hasn't had Mr. Beck, who hasn't had their minds challenged, their brains opened up wider. Just the, he really is inquiry-based and loves the different experiments. And he will be sorely missed after 24 years of working with us. And who can forget our beautiful Miss Sandy Hines? She's been our music teacher at Rossmore and Weaver Elementary School. Throughout her 24 years, she's actually also worked at Lee Elementary as a music teacher. She's well-connected to this community as well. She always, she has a passion for the arts, but she has a passion for our students. There is nothing that she won't do to support our kids. And it's just, we're going to miss her. She's always, she's another one who's always so positive, and she'll send me different emails throughout the year. And she's just one who will also cheerlead her fellow colleagues from kind of behind as well. And it's been certainly, I know I've appreciated that opportunity. So we're going to miss Sandy, but I'm sure we'll continue to see her in the community, which is great. An exemplary teacher, Kathy Rusecki, after 25 years. She's taught at our elementary schools, both at Lee, I shouldn't say, both at Lee, Weaver, and McGaw for 25 years. And if you're, if you are one who had the pleasure to be able to have her as your child's teacher, you know the impact that Kathy makes on behalf of all kids. So she's also an exceptional colleague to her team, and we're going to miss Kathy. I'm so connected to Mrs. Bertner, Kathy Lewis. When I was first hired in the district, I was a science teacher at McCalla Middle School back in 1999. And Kathy Lewis was the very first teacher that I met with. She worked the entire summer helping me get connected. If you can believe it, we didn't have textbooks then. Everything was lab-based. We did everything out of curriculum binders that the teachers created. And so Kathy just walked me through that, and we had a great bond. And she's done that for other new teachers who's come on board. So she's taught primarily 8th grade science, honors science, 7th grade science as well. 25 years, and we're certainly going to miss Kathy. And Jim Burns. Jim Burns has been with us for 26 years at LAE and Lee. And here's just another testament. You know, I had the pleasure, this, we were doing a Zoom training for some of our teachers, how to use Flipgrid since the school closure had come on. And Jim, the training was at 8 o'clock at night by our wonderful TOSA team. And Jim Elsas, Jim, excuse me, Burns, along with about four or five other teachers, were joining that training. And to me, it's just a testament about LoSal teachers, even though they are retiring literally in less than two months. He was committed to learning and strengthening his craft because he knew that was going to make a difference in the lives of our kids. And so for 26 years, I'm proud, and we're going to miss Mr. Burns as well. Sherri Coutts, who has been at McGaw Elementary for 30 years. What a long time to, beautiful career to celebrate at McGaw. I believe all of her years have been at McGaw. I hope I have that correct. And she's ending her career, and what a wonderful grade, transitional kindergarten. And I know those kids are going to miss her. But I know she gets to be an opportunity to start new chapters as well with her own grandkids and things of that sort. So congratulations to Sherri. My beloved as well, Miss Penny Noel. So I, as you guys know, in my eight years in Human Resources, much of that was with Penny Noel as my administrative assistant. But Penny really is an example of a classified employee who's worked here for 30-plus, 30 years and has worked in a variety of capacities. So she knows this district inside and out, and the wisdom and the connections that she's made with employees and families. She started off as a playground supervisor. Then she worked in our after-school extended daycare. Then she worked as a clerical assistant. She was a school office coordinator at Hopkinson Elementary. She was administrative assistant in the superintendent's office and ed services. She was the classified personnel- She was the classified personnel specialist in HR. Then she went to IT, really completely different stretch of stretching her skills. She always is one who loves to learn. She's also the big party planner. She's really the, she's a big part of the fabric and the culture here that really kind of connects people. And then, and then as administrative assistant in HR. And I know Joe is going to certainly miss working with her as well. So 30 years for Ms. Penny Noel, we're going to miss her. She's one that I know, she lives close by. She has pledged to continue to deliver birthday cakes and celebrations even in her retirement. So I know as a lifelong friend that we won't be saying goodbye to her or just wishing her well in her new chapter. 37 years, really an icon at Los Alamos High School, Social Science Department, Social Science Department Chair, a cross-country coach, Mark Celestin for over 37 years. And he again, did retire mid-year in February, came to the board on this before his retirement. We are fortunate that we're going to continue to see Mark as he, well, he has pledged to continue coaching cross-country in the new year. So Mark, we hope you enjoyed some safe travels before the outbreak occurred. And we look forward to seeing you soon. And then certainly not least, but for last, really a celebration of 40 years to this single district. And she worked as an art teacher at both Oak and McCalla. I would say the bulk of her time really has been at McCalla. I had the great pleasure, as Mrs. Davidson did as well, we both worked at McCalla. And Sherri is just an amazing art teacher. The amount of extra time and hours that she puts for students to help them with the scene, with I say senior eighth grade art projects that get displayed up on the walls. And she's found more space on the ceiling and then in walls down in the breezeway coming in at the summer. She just has a thirst and a passion that certainly isn't going to end just because that she's retiring. So I'm sure that she'll be a strong supporter of the arts. So I apologize for the longer report this evening, but I really wanted to give some credit to these amazing employees. So we are better together.
And I have spoken to some of the people who are retiring. And it is a challenging year for them to retire. They say like, well, I kind of collected some of the things from my classroom because they're teaching virtually. And, and I was made a comment how I can't even see you at our little retirement reception, which is at least it's, it's like a formalized situation where they know they are being appreciated and thanked. And it's part of their whole closing. And to not even be able to go through that, I mean, it's like my heart breaks for, you know, the seniors and the eighth graders and the fifth graders and our retirees because major things are happening in their life and our socially accepted ways of going through these changes is no longer there.
And we do hope to have a retirement recognition, much like we have planned for our seniors to do sometime. If we can't do it in the summer, we'll do it at Thanksgiving. We would certainly like to do that for our retirees. Now, not everyone will necessarily be able to attend. But we would like to do, because I know their own colleagues would like to do something for them as well. The principals would like to speak about them. These people really have just made this really their second family. And they've become part of our family as well. And so we're definitely going to miss them.
So thank you for doing that. Okay, now onto something that's much more upbeat. Now we're having our official recognition of Blake Ravello as our student board rep. And normally at this time, I would go down with, with Dr. Pulver to the podium and we give you stuff and I'd hug you and say how much I love you and all that kind of stuff. So I'm not, I'm going to stay here. But this is the opportunity where we as a board just want to say thank you. And I asked our board members when, after you gave your report, to basically not make a comment because now this is our time to thank you. So Mrs. Russell, would you like to say anything to Blake?
Well, I mean, through all this COVID stuff that's been going on, I miss the hugs. But you had just been a dynamic student board member. You know, you stay through the whole time and, and I, I've just enjoyed your reports. They're always so enthusiastic. You include so many students as it should be. And we will miss you, but you're going to Long Beach and you're going to do well. I know. And you're going to major in mathematics and you'll be a math teacher, just like I was. So good luck to you and I know you're going to succeed, very much so. Thank you for all you've done.
Mr. Boyer?
Blake, what can I say? It's been a pleasure. You are a dynamic young man. And I, I do grieve that you weren't able to enjoy this last part of your, of your senior year. And for all the seniors, but I do appreciate your upbeat and your upbeatness, your enthusiasm. Your presentations were awesome. The Los Al Locos, I'd never thought it could get any better. Here we are, student section in the county. And I, I mean, I don't know where we were in the whole country, but I mean, to be that level and the way ASB has worked, the way you worked across the campus and not only ASB, but your academics and all the other things, do your church and all the other groups you're involved in. I expect to see great things from you. And I know this time will pass too. We're not sure why we're having to go through it all. It's very, and I do appreciate the heartfelt comments and that you shared and the tears. And it is a time of, time for joy, but also it's a time of sadness as you transition. I wish you the very best at Long Beach State. Hurry up, get that credential and get back in the student teach.
Mrs. Davidson?
So I've known Blake since I gave you Mr. Frog and you were a toddler. So, and you were in my eighth grade class. I have had thousands of students and really you're top of the list. I, I knew from the beginning that there was, that you, your energy and your enthusiasm and your positive passion and the way that you uphold other people. And you were there for the, the person who's hurting most. You see that. Blake, I don't know, I, I would love it if you became the superintendent when Dr. Pulver decides to go and play in Hawaii. But, but what, but I know that you're going to make a difference in the world, Blake. I know that you are going to touch hearts wherever you go. And this world will be a better place because of you. And it's, it's been an honor to have, to have had you in my class and to see you here as the most phenomenal board rep that, that has, you shined all year. So thank you with all, I thank you with all my heart. Love you.
Mrs. Hill?
Well, Blake, your leadership skills are amazing. And I just watched you this morning on the Monday morning memo when you helped Principal Velasic surprise one of the nominees or one of the awardees this morning. And one of the things that amazes me about you is that it doesn't matter who you are or who you are in, in the class, you are connected with so many people. I have so many wonderful memories of seeing you in a variety of different places, whether it was spending a whole afternoon together when we were with the robotics team or at a basketball game when you asked me to do the roller coaster and you scared the heck out of me. And I said, no, thank you. But you know, you are just amazing. You are amazing. You have an amazing character. You have an amazing enthusiasm and commitment to what you do. And you couldn't make us more proud to be the Griffin you are. And I'm so excited that you're going to Long Beach State. That's my alma mater as well. And I just want to say thank you for all that you've done. And thank you for finally teaching me the roller coaster. You're amazing.
One of the things that I have always really appreciated about you, Blake, is that you're truly genuine. You are Blake. And I have never, I've only known you this year, but you have been consistently Blake this entire year. And I think that's how you live your life. You're full of energy. You're full of ideas. You always want something to be happening. You're kind of a pusher, but you do it with a smile on your face. And as a board rep, I got all sorts, from your reports, I got all sorts of great information, reminding me what was happening when my kids were on campus. And I felt much more connected because of that. I'm really sorry that this happened during your school year on, for many reasons. It will make you a better person for, or make us all better people for going through this whole COVID-19 thing. But I just want to thank you for being Blake and for being so true to yourself. And I have enjoyed getting to know you and you will do well. And Long Beach is a big school. I went there and now found out that more, two-thirds of the board went to Long Beach State. It's a good school. You'll, you'll do well. You'll meet people. You will touch more people than you ever know and you'll touch them with a positivity that everybody should have. So thank you so much for sharing part of you with us.
Yes. So Blake, it would be, nothing would please me more than to see you return back after college to be a, I think you said math teacher. We need phenomenal math teachers. I don't, I think you've had a lot of great role models in, in, in that capacity, both at home and just a few steps outside of, of home as well as a math teacher. You know, I, I had the great fortune of getting to know a little bit about Blake just by being a teacher at McCalla when Carrie was there. But really where I started to get to know the impact of this amazing, smart and talented individual was all the way back at LAE when he spoke to the board as a fifth, I believe it was as a fifth grader. It might've been as a fourth grader. When he was giving the speech contest, if you can remember Dr. Okino. And the legacy has continued at LAE of having the speech contest. And the, the students at LAE who were giving their speeches always amazed us because they did everything without any notes and just with such fluency and accuracy and just presentation. And then you just have an infectious personality, one that people really want to get to know and a way to kind of disarm people. He's been, I think, an extremely inclusive student representative, that's certainly a board representative and trying to really reach out beyond some of the, just the traditional ways that we see students getting recognized. As you heard Mrs. Hill talk a little bit about robotics or whether there's about ice hockey or just other different clubs and ways to kind of connect. The selfie of the week, I think, was a great way to, to, to get us to see. And he's always one, whenever you see him on campus, and thankfully we have, we have a, a school culture and a district culture that people actually enjoy seeing administrators on the campus. And he's always one who just is welcoming everyone and his face lights up and makes you light up as well. Was pleased to see that not only was he being, was he helping Mr. Velasic surprise somebody with getting the principal's award, but that actually you got the principal's award. And I cannot imagine, along with Dominique, another really fine, outstanding student to get that award, the principal's award. And I actually remember in the fall when he was crowned the homecoming king. So certainly remember that as well. And so Blake, we do have a few things here that I'll come over and hand to you on our behalf. The resolution that the board passed tonight at the board meeting is here for you with all of the board member signatures. We have a special gift, commemorative gift for you that you can open up now or later, your choice. And then just a little bit more love of our flowers to have our appreciation and love. We are going to miss you, but like I said, we know that you're not going far. And I love the spirit of the Griffin. And if you saw the spirit of the Griffin, that certainly I think Blake represents. It's also how much credit he has already given and a warm welcome to Nico already. And oh, I don't know why that makes me, I just love to see that the way that our students kind of connect. I was getting a little emotional. Of how we paved the way for others and you being a positive role model. And I know for sure that Nico will do that for the next student that comes on board because you've also led by that example. And so thank you for your graciousness and we're going to miss, and we certainly love you as well. That's compliments of Ms. Tina. I am not a very good rapper.
You can't sing?
Well, I can sing.
Oh, I love, I really needed a new pen. You have no idea. Oh my gosh, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. It's a great, it has a little nameplate. You're very welcome. It's our pleasure.
Do you want to say any last thing before we go on to our next agenda?
I thank you so much. You guys, like, it's just incredible. Like you guys are so incredibly generous and you, you make me so prideful to be a Griffin, really. And you, just the, just the leadership that you guys have. You always go out of your way to make sure teachers feel welcome. You always go out of your way to make sure that the community gets their opinion. And I saw that every single, every single time at a board meeting with the map. You guys, you guys simply just said, you know what, let's just go. And we, we want the orange hat. Let's just go with the orange hat. We're not going to listen to anyone. But you guys all made sure to go out of your way multiple, multiple, multiple times to get people's opinions. And I think that's what's so amazing about Los Al, is that we go out of our way to make sure our community loves the school district and the school district loves the community. And I think that's amazing. And that's something that I've learned and that's what I want to move forward with. Hopefully going to be a superintendent someday. That is one lesson. Again, we are better together and we need to respect everyone and we are one big team. We really are.
Well said. Okay, even though it is sad that Blake will not be here anymore giving his reports, we have another exciting opportunity. And our, that exciting opportunity is in the person of Nico. I am, I was able to be on the interview panel with Mrs. Reed and Dr. Pulver. And he's an outstanding young man and he actually made a decision really, really easy. But Dr. Pulver, did you like to say anything else before we officially introduce Nico?
Sure. Although I think we'll let Mrs. Reed also speak a little bit. But Nico, I just want to welcome you. We are looking forward to having you join us in this new role. You've obviously had some great examples of Blake, but also we want you to be you. We, every board member, student board rep is completely different and they bring their own personality and, and, and we love them for that. So we could not be more excited about working with you. And I also want to just take a few moments to, as Blake and a few others mentioned, really want to thank Ms. Tammy Siaka and TJ Fenton for continuing to advise our, our student leaders. They've been exceptional to work with and they really are a lot of the ones that we here work with as they support the students directly at the school site. So with that, Mrs. Reed, would you like to share anything about Nico? Before Nico, we give you an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, we're just really excited to have Nico, as we shared earlier. Having an additional student board member next year who has a history of, with ASB, previously serving as a freshman co-president, the sophomore co-president, the assembly commissioner, involved in the aquatics program as well as growing up STEM. I think as Dr. Pulver said, every board member that joins us brings something unique and special to the table. And we've been so fortunate to have really just year after year outstanding Griffins represent the student body on our Board of Education. And so I think Nico is going to be another great addition to the team next school year. And I'm really excited to see what he will bring for the 2020, 2021 school year. So thanks for joining us, Nico.
Do we want to let Nico say a few?
Nico, would you like to say a few words?
And I'm trying to hold this video camera because the people who are on Zoom, which is really Diana, Nico, and Andrea, they can see some of the board members. So that's not just looking at one another, so.
Well, I just want to start by saying good evening to everybody. President Kattulio, esteemed board members, Dr. Pulver, executive cabinet, and the members of the community that are watching at home right now. I just want to say thank you to you guys for giving me this opportunity to be the next student rep to the Board of Education. And thank you for everyone who's gotten me here, Mrs. Siakam, Mr. Fenton, all my family and friends and all of ASB for always having my back. And I know that I have some huge, huge shoes to fill. But I'm promising you that I'm going to try my best and work harder than ever.
I would just like to say, Nico, that you will bring your own shoes and you will fill them quite nicely. And I was very impressed with you, you were so articulate when we were going through the interview process. And I've always think on the people, what about people who want to be the school, the student board rep to the Board of Education. Means you hang out with a lot of adults and we may not be as much fun as the student section. But we really appreciate the joy that you bring from your viewpoint and you bring it to the board. Because we, we're here because we care about students, we care about you. And I know that you will do a great job of representing the students in Los Al and representing yourself. Okay, anything else? Okay. We don't have to make them, we don't have to do anything because he's already been approved.
There'll be no recess.
You've already been approved, Nico, so.
They're welcome to stay on, or, but we also. They're welcome to stay on, or, but we also understand.
Yes, if you want to stay on, you're more than welcome to. But if you have things you need to get done, we totally understand it. We're going into the business part of our board meeting. The next item on our board agenda is our community and staff participation. And I believe we have no community or staff participation. We have no information or presentations. I always hate that because it sounds like we know nothing then. But we're going on to our consent calendar. We have no pool, so I will entertain a motion to approve consent item number 10A through zero.
So move.
Second, second. This, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
All right, our next item is an action item and it's an approval of a resolution. And this is the order, the biannual trustee election and specification of the election order. That is a very formal resolution. We do this whenever we have an election. This particular one is also saying this will be the first time that we have our elections take place in trustee areas. So, I need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, is there any discussion or questions from the board members? Yes.
I'd just like, once again, to thank Dr. Pulver and Tina. What the work that you did, the amount of meetings into the 30s. I mean, I don't think anybody has any comprehension of the hours that you put in. And 11 different maps, the way that everything changed and evolved, and the way that you were so attentive is a statement to your leadership. And I know, Tina, you worked so hard and you keep, you hold us all together. So, thank you so much. Thank you.
Mrs. Cattulli?
We have, oh, aye?
No, Mrs. Hill would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry? The voice came this way. Mrs. Hill, please.
No problem. And I just also want to thank Dr. Pulver again for the wonderful presentation that he made to the committee that approved our, our maps. And it was very interesting to me because I watched from, from Zoom. But it was interesting to me because we lived this so much and knew so much of what was going on. And some of the questions that they came up with and how well he had already anticipated what those questions would be and had already answered them was amazing. So, thank you very much, Dr. Pulver, and thank you, Mrs. Cattulli and Mrs. Wilson for both sitting on that committee.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it was a process that I did not want to do at all. But we had to, so we did. And I think the results are good for the district and that's what counts. Okay, now, do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
And I have a second.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Okay.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Okay, our next action item is approval of three new courses at Los Al High School. And Mrs. Reed, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam President. The first course we're bringing forward tonight is Introduction to Algebra. And we're really excited through the collaboration of our 612 mathematics teachers and the support of the Secondary Math Collaborative. There was a need identified to develop a course for grade nine students at Los Angeles High School that would adequately prepare them for a successful completion of algebra in the 10th grade. And so, this course has been submitted to UC Doorways and the NCAA Clearinghouse, an attempt to really garner approval from both agencies for an additional year of A through G mathematics credit for students who would enroll next school year in Introduction to Algebra. And so, we are waiving approval at the A through G level. But this course will count as 10 credits of high school math towards a student's graduation diploma. Our other two courses we're bringing forward tonight are Theater Production and Advanced Technical Theater. It's really exciting. The growth of our Los Angeles High School Drama Department has created a need for a complimentary support program in set costume and lighting design. And as the program has grown, our drama department, the students engage in the process has also grown. And so currently, students can receive credit as Technical Theater 1 and 2. However, there is a student program demand for additional opportunities that go through the advanced level for our students who are interested in backstage set design and technical theater lighting. And so, the creation of these two courses would really establish a progressive drama course of study that facilitates skill development for onstage and backstage students in a four-year course trajectory. So, we're really excited about bringing these three courses forward for next school year.
Great. May I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the board members? Okay.
I just want to say that as a huge theater buff, I know that one of the things I love about our theater program is that we always think it's just the star. But it really takes so many people to put on a theater production. And there's so many careers in theater that I don't think students even realize. And I think what we're doing and opening that world to them is just amazing. And it just makes me hopeful that I will get back into the theater someday.
And you know, this is a big shout out to Stacy Castiglione. She's our drama director at Los Angeles High School. And she really has just grown our drama department from the inside out. And so, her focusing on the backstage element and engaging our students is just another way that she's helped keep Griffins connected on campus. So, just a big thank you to her and her hard work these last five years as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Okay, our next action item is our second reading and final approval of a revised board policy for employee use of technology. Yes. And deletion administrative regulation of employee use of technology. Dr. Nyan?
Yes, so this is the second reading and it, based, it lists out the employee use of technology in the, in the event that technology cannot be used for, to send and store information regarding copyrighted patent materials, inaccurate disruptive information, materials that are either constructive as harassment, as well as material that are privileged. And so, this is the second reading, which we're taking forward tonight.
May I have a motion?
Move approval.
Is there any board discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Okay, now we're on to our second reading and final approval of revised board policy intra-district open enrollment. Dr. Fraser?
Thank you, Madam President. This was the second reading to update the board policy 5116.1, intra-district, intra-district open enrollment. This policy is being updated based on CSBA's policy guide sheet that is distributed throughout the school year. This update reflects the legal requirement AB 1127 for districts to approve an intra-district transfer request for a student who is a victim of bullying. This update also deletes material related to transfers under the State Open Enrollment Act and federal program improvement as those programs are no longer operational. Board policy 5118 also references those outdated programs and it is recommended to be deleted.
May I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Any board discussion?
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Okay, this is for approval of first reading of revised board policy for inter-district attendance. Dr. Fraser?
Thank you, Madam President. This first reading is an update to board policy 5117, intra-district attendance. This policy is being updated based, again, on the CSBA's policy guide sheet that is distributed throughout the school year. This update reflects the legal requirement of AB 1127 for districts to provide transportation assistance to a student receiving an intra-district transfer who is eligible for free and reduced priced meals and the child of an active duty or, I'm sorry, or of an, or of a child of an active duty military, parent guardian, or victim of bullying. This update also reflects the education code requirement that allows permits to be in effect for five years instead of one without being renewed on a yearly basis.
That's a huge improvement.
Additionally, there will be, there will be a slight adjustment to the language. We will send you a copy of that as well. It refers to the superintendent's ability to limit the amount of students that would be transferred out. It's just a small piece to the language in there. I will get that update to you. It was, came in last minute right before the board meeting. So, but we will get that to you for the second reading.
Okay, I would just like clarification. This means if you are an inter-district transfer, you don't have to apply every year, that it's actually, will be good for five years?
Correct.
That will save our personnel time. May I have a motion, please?
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion from a board member? Okay.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Cattulli?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Okay, now we have approval of first reading of a new board policy, 3110, Transfer of Funds and Deletion if Administrative Regulation 3110 Transfer of Funds Between Categories and Amendments. Dr. Nyan?
Yes, so this board policy would establish five folds. First is to transfer funds, transfer between funds. Second would be temporary transfer of monies held in a payment obligation. Third would be making transfers between fund balances at the year end, so we're closing our books. Fourth would be specified amount to be transferred at the county auditor and treasurer for a specific reserve fund for during, during the, during the fiscal year. And then lastly, would be transfer between funds as authorized by law. So, this is the first reading of this policy.
May I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. We got somebody. Any, does a board member want to make a comment? I would just like to say that this is, I consider this a board policy under housekeeping. Hopefully, we never have to transfer funds for cash flow and things like that. But I also never thought we would ever close our schools, you know, two and a half months early and we all get a computer. So, this is, I believe, very, a proactive thing to do because life is uncertain and we have to be aware of that. So, thank you, Dr. Nyan.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Okay, now we're on for approval of first reading of revised board policy 3551, Food Service Operations slash Cafeteria Fund. Dr. Nyan?
Yes, so in this new policy here, in this updated policy, there are a few options. Our district will be in, regarding Cafeteria Fund will be an option to, the wages and benefits are being paid from the Cafeteria Fund. That's how we've been tracking all these expenses. And the second major thing that is in this update is the new law of SB 265. Students with pay meal balances must be, not, must not be denied a reimbursable meal, meaning that there is no, we're not allowed to serve an alternate meal. So, these are the two key things with this update. This will be the first reading as well.
May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Does any board member have a comment to make?
Can I just make a quick, so, just that we keep approving everything, I'd just like that reminder to the public, if you're watching, that, that we have the agenda ahead of time. If we have questions, we don't just approve things. We ask our questions, get clarification, and, and then move on. And if the questions are something that we feel the public would be concerned about, we usually bring those up and talk about them too. So, it's, we have, we get foreknowledge before we vote.
And I just would like to make a comment that we are going through our board policies, which is something routinely every school district should do. And lots of times, we're just tweaking them, or there's an outdated program, you remove that outdated program, you put the current program in, and it changes in laws. And they have to be approved with two readings from a board. So, again, it's something that we get a lot of information on and it sounds like we're just like talking parrots up here. But we really have done our homework and we're trying to be legally compliant. Okay, with that said, we can go ahead and vote.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Okay, now we're on to approval of courses. We have new course titles. And Mrs. Reed, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we're bringing forward for your approval two course title changes, Digital Media Productions 1 and 2, which we are recommending a move to Film and Television Production and Film and Television Production 2. The course title changes really more accurately reflect what is taught and the scope and sequence of each course. In addition, these courses will remain within our CTE program at Los Angeles High School. And with these changes, we will also be sending the new course titles to UC CSU Doorways to serve as a category F Fine Arts course. Currently, these courses only count as a category G elective. So, we're seeking approval for the UC Doorways so that they could count as a potential F Fine Arts and G Category elective. Thank you.
Okay, great. May I have a motion?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any comment from a board member?
Mrs. Reed, could you just explain a little bit more to the public what that means, the classification? Because we use A through G all the time and I'm not sure that everybody, until they get to high school, really gets what that means.
Absolutely. So, in the state of California, we have college entrance requirements for our Cal State and University of California systems that we like to refer to as the A through G, A, B, C, D, all the way through G. Those letters literally stand for types of courses and the number of courses students need to complete with a C minus or higher during their time in high school to be eligible to apply to a Cal State or UC school in the state of California. And so, something that's really great about the course approval changes that we're asking for tonight is that if a student was to enroll in Film and Television Production 1 or 2, this course could really count in two of those areas. It could count as an F for Fine Arts. All students are required to take one year of Fine Arts. Or it could count in the Open G College Prep elective category. And so, it really is opening up opportunities for our students to continue through a CTE pathway. Because currently, students who take this course pathway will have to make room in their schedule eventually to put a Fine Art elective in and maybe not complete all the course in the sequence. So, by adding that additional opportunity for students, they're able to count one year as a G elective and an additional year as a Fine Art elective. So, really just, it helps our CTE enrollment and gives our students more options.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Reed.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mrs. Reed, it's to give our kids options, the more options, the better. Thank you.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Okay, we're on to our declaration of need for fully qualified educators. Dr. Fraser?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I'm bringing forward the declaration of need for fully qualified educators. Educators, in essence, that is, gives the board flexibility. Although our first priority is to hire highly qualified teachers, it does give the board flexibility in case, or like a precautionary, that we do need to hire somebody outside of their credential area.
Thank you. This is also something we do yearly. May I have a motion?
Move approval.
Any discussion from board members?
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
We're now on to our approval of warrants. Warrants is like the district's checkbook. We get many pages of them. It wasn't too bad this time. I think it was in the low 40s for the number of pages.
Yes.
Yeah. They're still not really fun to read. But we go through, we read every single one. If we have a question, we'll say, why did we do this? What is this for? And we are told. So, I need approval for the warrants as presented.
Move approval of the warrants as presented.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Okay, and after we spent the money, we're so happy because we live in a very, very generous community that even though the schools are not in session on campus, but in distance learning, we still get donations every year and every month. And we have, they'll be up in just a second. That's our year to date. We received $10,000 this month and we, it moved. We have, and we, half a million, oh, $536,966.48 total year to date, which is just phenomenal. So, just thank you to every human being in our school district. May I have a motion for acceptance?
Move approval.
Okay, any discussion?
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill?
Okay, we're now on to our certificated.
We need Mrs. Hill. Mrs. Hill?
Yeah, aye. Thank you.
Yay. Okay, we're now on to our certificated and classified personnel report. It's just a certificated report this time. You're tricking me.
Correct. We thought we'd change it up tonight, Madam President. I'm bringing forward the certificated personnel report as presented tonight.
May I have a motion?
Move approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion?
Mrs. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli.
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson.
Aye.
And Mrs. Hill.
Aye.
Okay, we're now on to communication, and Mrs. Hill, I'm going to have you go first, unless you'd rather I didn't.
No, that's fine, that's great, thank you very much. Well, as, as we have said, if this was any other school year, we'd have this long list of celebrations that we have been able to physically attend, but we have not. But still, I just want to thank our district, our administrators, everybody who has worked so hard, ASB, to really make students feel special, and I'll get to our staff in a few minutes, but I just see signs all over the neighborhood when I take my walks, and it just makes me really joyful that I know it may not be what they anticipated, but they are loved and not forgotten and celebrated. And so I'm very, very appreciative of everybody who works so hard to do that, and I always take a minute and pause and read the sign, and so that's very special. I did get an opportunity to help the cafeteria staff and Dr. Pulver pass out lunches, and that's a very light, enlightening thing to do, in the sense is that you see how grateful people are, and you just see how that this puts not only food into their car, but also a part of the routine into their, into their day as well. And so I'm really grateful every time I get an opportunity to do that. I did want to thank Mr. Bob Osmann for putting together just an extraordinary celebration of our teachers and our staff, and what he did to put that together, and to assemble everything and make it look so seamless. We just really appreciate all that he's been doing during this time and helping communicate so much out to our community as well. And then just a special thanks to our staff, being that this was Staff Appreciation Week, and knowing how many of them are trying to teach their own children, as well as teach all the children in our community, and all the different things that are going on behind the scenes that we really appreciate. And then also just want to remind everybody that this is, May is Mental Health Month, and it might be needed more than ever. And so our counselors are doing a phenomenal job reaching out to our students, and also really appreciate all the communication from the sites, whether it's in newsletters, or videos, or Instagram, or Facebook, however it is, there, there is a real effort to put that forward. So that's it for me this evening, thank you.
Mrs. Russell.
Oh.
I'd like to change it up, keep us awake.
That was different. Okay, I was, I had the fortunate opportunity of being able to pass out the yard signs for our graduates with the stakes and everything, and I have to say, I thought there was going to be a huge, long lineup all the way out to the boulevard, but it really turned out, they seemed to even themselves, spaced themselves so they didn't all show up at once, and the teachers were all phenomenal, though they were out there with their pom poms and their little balloon banger things, or whatever those were, and the kids were so excited to get their, their lawn signs. And, you know, I know one of my parents in the Lions Club, and her daughter is graduating, and she was like so excited that they could finally get out, and they were able to see some of their friends, so it made that part of it exciting as well. I just want to also thank all the teachers, the leadership of the administration has been phenomenal in making things go smoothly. I, I know people from other school districts, and they certainly are not having the experience that our students are having, and so it's all because of their hard work and efforts that things are, are going very, very well. And I, I also wanted to mention Bob Osmann's thing that Mrs. Hill mentioned, that was a phenomenal video, and I know everybody appreciated that. I just want to say that tomorrow is actually Day of the Teacher, so, you know, if you get a chance to do, be, do something for a special teacher, you know, see if you can't do something. And like, once again, as Mrs. Hill mentioned, all the presence on the various social media has been very enlightening, you know, any community member can read a lot of those, and they get an idea of what's really happening in their phenomenal community. And I, I know the, the students aren't in class every single moment of the day like they are when they're at actual school, and I have to say, they're out exercising, they're riding their bikes, they're jogging, they're, they're being, you know, actually good members of society and not causing any problems, and, you know, that could have been the case. And so I want to compliment them on what they have been doing to make our community good as well. That's it.
Mr. Boyer.
Unprecedented times, and, you know, it makes you pause. My wife and I got a little stir crazy, so we, we took a little drive the other day and got out of our community here, just, just to, just to get out of, out of the zone, and we came back and then drove around our community. And the one thing I do appreciate about our three communities here is the support for our schools, and the signs, and like Diana had talked about, and like Karen said, she passed them out, those things, the Bob Osmann videos, the things we do to connect, the newsletters, the Monday Morning Memo. Blake, I watch those things, so it's just, it's, it's, it makes a big difference and brightens somebody's day. The video that we did as a board, very humorous, I'm not going to win an Oscar, I know, but, but the, you know, we can appreciate staff, and I do appreciate that connectivity that we have, the principals reaching out, Dr. Dr. Pulver the other day, he's got a conference call with the principals, trying to keep them going, keep the teachers going. It's hard, it's hard. I'm working from home myself, I know it's hard to stay motivated and keep things going. We're doing it so much better, it was hard, it came at us fast, and I just have to thank everybody for those efforts. I really hope we do get to have that graduation ceremony here in July, and I hope you get to have your prom, and we get to make those things happen, and I'm glad we have things to look forward to. I, this time will pass, we will get there, and I have a lot of great hope in that that is going to happen, and good things will be happening, and I just, hats off to the parents that are home with the kids, especially the younger ones, the, you know, the kindergarteners and the first graders trying to do teaching online, and I know we're addressing all those things all the way through high school and all the AP tests, but one thing I do know for sure, our fields are looking awesome.
Yes.
I have never seen our fields greener, nicer, and great turf. I heard they're actually, one of the city parks, they're actually playing golf and starting to tear it up that way, so stop that. But yeah, no, our facilities, and there's a lot going on. I, I always cruise the high school, I was like, not again. So the pool's coming along, we're going to town over there on the, on the new three-story building, I see the excavators moving, they're putting the things, getting things going, and I appreciate all the things going on behind the scenes, Nancy, all the hard work with our bond ratings, and moving forward on our investing funds, and things haven't stopped, we're doing a lot of things, there's a lot of HR issues, thank you, and to Andrea who's getting lined up with all these, always something to be done. And Tina, thank you for juggling all that you juggle, for keeping all of us in line and trying to keep us out, and help us even find our Zoom links when we can't find our email. So we're panicked at the last minute, like, I can't find my Zoom link. So, you know, we're all struggled, so, again, thank you, and I wish everybody just to enjoy this time with faith, family, and friends, you know, this time as we go, and just to count our blessings, and to be thankful that this isn't, wasn't the big, you know, earthquake, the big hurricane, the big, some national, natural disaster, it's something different, but this too will pass, and we'll get to go back, and the freeways will be there, the things will be there, and we'll, we'll get back at it, and we'll get this, get the kind of, and we'll navigate what's going to be some tough decisions to make with the finances and things, and I think we'll just have to do what we do at Los Altos, put our heads together and figure it out.
Mrs. Davidson.
Well, I did get to be part of one celebration. We didn't, since we didn't have senior awards, every year we get, Stan and I give a scholarship, or scholarships in honor of our daughter who passed away, she was a senior at the high school, loved Los Al, very engaged and a part cheerleader, ASB, and so for the last little over 20 years, we've been able, through the generosity of family and friends, to be able to give scholarships out. So last Thursday, we surprised six students on Zoom because of Tina Heron, and I thank her with all my heart, she orchestrated the whole thing, and one student was shy about getting on, and she would not start it until we got ahold of her and got her on the Zoom meeting. It was a surprise, and the scholarships given to, and I want to thank the, especially the Grease family, Louis and Lisa, who no longer live here, they live in Corona del Mar, but the people who help support our scholarships. We were able to give six, and we gave, therefore, students who have demonstrated incredible integrity, courage in the face of adversity, stood up against all odds, and been a very wonderful part of the Los Al community at the high school. And I'd like to read their names, Evelyn Pina, Sunjay, how do I say it?
Gudakonda.
Gudakonda, I love him, but I'm terrible with names. Dominique Radcliffe, Robin Marshall, Sophia Bean, and the sixth one went to my, one of my most favorite people in the universe, Blake Ravello. So these scholarships mean everything to Stan and me because we get to, because the counselors come to us with page-long recommendations, telling stories of how these students have impacted the culture and the community at the high school, and how they have, in all different varieties of ways, reached out and touched people by the way that they choose to live their lives. So it's, it's a big honor for us, and so I'm really grateful that Tina put together the Zoom meeting. The other joyful moment, I listened to Diana's voice when she talked about handing out lunches, so I, I did go and hand out lunches yesterday with Andrew at LAE, and I, I think connections, we were realizing how important human connection is, and I really want to just give a shout out to those who are working on the lines, they're handing out the foods, they are so joyful, and that, and people driving through in this amount of time, they've made personal connections, they know who's coming up, they ask how the kids are, what's going on, there's personal connections that happen in a matter of seconds, and, and the joy between the families and those distributing the food is just tangible, and so it really got to me, so thank you, Diana, for talking about that, and thank you, Andrew, for letting me go, even though I'm in that, that elderly group that's not supposed to venture out, so.
You were well protected.
I was well protected.
And all sorts of other things.
And the last thing that I'm doing is just, right before we, we stopped the schools, Aunt Meg had allowed me to take her place on Human Relations Task Force, so I took 100 books home and I, to create a bibliography for the teachers from books that were donated, and I had a list of retired teachers, and we were going to have a bibliography party. Well, that all went by the wayside, so I'm sitting in my living room writing a bibliography. I'm telling you, they're pretty boring.
Write yourself?
Yes, it's pretty boring. The books look excellent, but the bibliography part of it is not fun. I too want to thank everybody in this district who's worked so hard to maintain human connection. I am concerned about the mental health of our families and our children, and the harder we try, and the more we reach out, every time you touch one person's life, it's going to make a difference. I read in, in an article yesterday, that one hotline in LA, suicide hotline got 91 calls on average, 91 in February, that 1,800 this month. So it's really important that we look to connecting with each other, people in our neighborhood, our students, our families. So thank you, everybody in this district that works so hard to maintain that love better together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for honoring Stephanie the way you do.
Thanks, thank you.
It helps many people. Keep that ripple, positive ripple going.
Thanks, ma'am.
Okay, I was able to be on the county committee meeting that was approving our final, you know, trustee plans, and I was already with all sorts of things to say, why we needed to do this, and that, and that, and your presentation was very explainable, if that's the correct word. It made sense, so they were going, oh, because I, I told them beforehand, the map is not pretty, because it's supposed to be, you know, like different parts of the neighborhood, and we look like we carved up Los Al, and they knew we had Leisure World, and so, but you did a great job, because I was like, seriously, I had made notes on what I was going to say to rebut questions and things, and they never came up. So, good job, appreciate that. I was also able to interview Nico, and that was really a very fun thing that the president gets to do, so that's one of my little perks there. We did have a, for California School Boards Association, we had a Region 15 Zoom meeting, and it went so well, and everybody had such a great time, we're going to do it again this coming Friday. And we take different topics and talk about what we're doing in the county with them. And what I really enjoy about it is that there's a lot of unifying factors. Every district is so proud of their lunch and breakfast program. It's like, oh, we serve, well, we don't have that many people here, so the fact that we serve this many lunches, you know, and, and that was good, and we have a lot of the same concerns. I think we're, Los Al's a little bit ahead on the whole technology thing than a lot of the other districts, but it's really interesting, and we're going to have, and I, I'm not quite sure what the main topic's going to be this coming Friday, but my real coup that I think I pulled off was that this morning, I had a Zoom meeting with Congressman Loenthal, and there was, there was Congressman Loenthal, two Pacers from CSBA, myself, Donald LaPlante was there, Candy Kern, who's a board member in Cypress, and Megan Kerr, who is a board member in Long Beach. And we got, Congressman Loenthal is incredibly open, and he listens to you, and he was listening and nodding, and he was talking about the package that they're trying to put together, another CARES package to put out, and we were talking about the impact that the particular state of California on our students, and what we're going to have, and what we can do, and he was talking about what they're trying to do to give the money to the state, so the state can use it to cover their essential services, and he said education is considered the, one of the most essential services. So that was like the news right off the thing, and I thought that was really important. And one thing that I really brought up to him is that when we talk about, like you discussed in your report, Dr. Pulver, the opening of schools, if we have to do a hybrid program, or if we have to do an online program, there are now, across the United States, probably literally millions of children without any kind of supervision or daycare. So we have to open schools at the same time or a little bit before people can really return to work, because if you have a family and your kids are over the age of like probably four, you use public schools as part of that daycare system. And I brought that up to him, and he went, he was nodding his head a lot, he, I said, if we can't get our schools open and our childcare open, then we can't get back to work as a society. I had no solutions for him, because I said, we can't hire, you know, enough teachers so that we only have 10 kids in a classroom, and we have no facilities for all, the other 20 kids that are running around Los, but hopefully.
And for us, it's not even the access to childcare, because we have been, we've given access.
Right.
Many of our families, and we've just dealt with this earlier this week, they don't plan, they have not planned to pay for childcare all day long.
Right.
And so, and we, I talked with a family member, who they're both essential workers, one is in healthcare, and the other one is a federal government employee, I can't quite remember the other occupation, and her husband, but they, they both have a good job, but, but they can't afford, this is almost a whole nother mortgage payment that they're trying to make to add childcare, because school's not in session.
Right.
And so even for working families, this additional expense will be detrimental.
Impactful, yeah.
If we can't provide an opportunity where, where we can provide, so hopefully, as a system, we can work this out.
He listened to me, that's all I can say. He was a very polite man, though. And then I have a couple announcements to make. The first announcement is, I would like to congratulate Kayla Cordish, she is the Los Al Almitos ROP Student of the Year. We usually have, ROP has a celebration of success, and they hand out scholarships, and she was actually recipient of three different scholarships. She received the Dewey Family Memorial Scholarship, and that is for a person who goes above and beyond the normal standards in their particular pathway. And then she received the ROP Career Pathways for Child Development for ROP, which was a biggie, and then she was also the Los Al ROP Student of the Year. So I thought, wow, she's a triple threat here, just congratulations, Kayla, I'm, we, we didn't have her celebration, you know, but I wanted to throw her name out there and tell her congratulations. And my last word is to all those, some sophomores, some juniors, some seniors, good luck on your APs. Your Advanced Placement tests are starting, I think, this week and go through next week, and it's going to be very, if you had taken them before, it's not going to be like you did, so good luck, I know you guys will do well, just take a deep breath, have water, and I think you have 45 minutes and one or two questions, and that's it. So I hope they ask the question you study for. So, if there is nothing else, and we're going into close, correct?
We will go into close.